Good evening. We'll open the Union County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for Monday, May 20, 2019. And we'll begin, as usual, with our invocation. Commissioner Aikman, if you'll lead us, please, sir.
Lord, we gather here tonight in a country that you have blessed with many freedoms. We pray that you continue to provide those blessings on this country that we call home. We thank you for-
The many men and women who serve us in every which way, our first responders and our military. We thank you for them, and we thank you for all that you've done. We pray that all that we do tonight will be pleasing to you and that everything that we do will bring glory to your name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Each month, we have the opportunity to recognize contributions of our employees. And tonight, we want to recognize Stacy Chapman in General Services for five years of service, Randy Stacks with General Services, five years, Christopher Hicks with the Sheriff's Department with five years. With 20 years, Donna Meadows with the Board of Elections, and Bradley Purser with the Sheriff's Office. And with 25 years, Peter Brown with Public Works. Additionally, we had one retirement in May, and it was Curtis Teague with Emergency Services with five years. I'd like to thank those for their contributions. Next, we didn't have anyone to sign up for informal comments. Was there anyone missed to sign up? Not, we'll move on. Do we have any additions, deletions, and/or the adoption of the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have our consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll move it fast at first, but we'll slow it down. Old business, we have no old business. As for new business, we have the appointment of the Tax Administrator and Deputy Tax Collectors. This Deputy Manager, would you like to help us there?
Yes, Chairman Helms, thank you very much. Tonight, I have the pleasure of bringing to you the appointment of Tax Administrator and several Deputy Tax Collectors. At this time, like many larger jurisdictions, Union County has consolidated the statutory offices of Tax Collector and Assessor into one Tax Administrator position. This position was filled until May 31 of 2017 by John Potowski, who retired at that time. The Board of Commissioners took action to appoint Van Harrell as the Tax Administrator to fulfill the remainder of Mr. Potowski's unexpired term. Pursuant to General Statute 105-294, the county assessor is appointed by the Board of Commissioners, and he or she must meet various requirements relative to age, education, and continuing education, which all have been satisfied by Mr. Harrell. Pursuant to GS 105-349, the Tax Collector is appointed by the Board of Commissioners. The Collector must be a person of character and integrity whose experience in business and collection work is satisfactory to the governing body. The Assessor and Collector can be removed from office during a term for good cause, after notice, and an opportunity for hearing. Mr. Harrell has 19 years of experience in tax, including 15 years with Union County, one year with Martin County, and three years with the North Carolina Department of Revenue. Mr. Harrell is the past President of Central Piedmont Tax Association, has served as a member of the statewide review board for the selection and maintenance of the NCVTS software program that consolidated 100 different software programs into one multi-jurisdictional system, and has also served on the NCACC Tax and Finance Committee for 16 years. He is currently serving as the Chair of the North Carolina Association of Assessing Officers' Certification Committee. He has a bachelor's and master's in public administration, and he has been certified as a Deputy Tax Collector since 2006, and received his certification from the North Carolina Department of Revenue as Certified Assessor in September of 2017. Additionally, he most recently graduated from the UNC School of Government Municipal and County Administration course. In addition to Mr. Harrell's appointment that we're asking for a four-year term beginning June 4 of 2019, we are also asking for the Board to appoint or approve as Deputy Tax Collectors several of our staff to run concurrent with the Tax Administrator position. And as in your agenda package, pursuant to Statute 105-350F, the governing body of a county is authorized to appoint one or more Deputy Tax Collectors. The statutory appointment of these individuals allows them, under the direction of the Collector, to perform any act that the Tax Collector may perform. Each of the individuals listed in your agenda item are currently working under Mr. Harrell's direction and the functional role of Deputy Tax Collector, but they are not statutorily appointed. Mr. Harrell hired five of these individuals personally and promoted the others over the past 15 years. They are all of high ethical character and have performed exceptionally well in their roles, and they are Mitzi Balcom, our Revenue Division Director, Christian Foxworth, Revenue Division Supervisor, Heather Long, Deputy Tax Collector, Audrey Cruz, Deputy Tax Collector, Octavius Rory, Deputy Tax Collector, David Stroud, Deputy Tax Collector, and Melissa Edelman, Deputy Tax Collector. And I think most of them, if not all, are here with us tonight, along with Van. So with that, I would ask you to take the two actions that are before you, to approve the appointment of Van Harrell to the position of Tax Administrator for a four-year term beginning June 4, 2019, and to also approve the appointment of the individuals just named as Deputy Tax Collectors to serve a term that runs concurrent to the Tax Administrator.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I believe we have a motion. Is any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Under the post.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have the update on the 2019 A Union County Revenue Bond Issants and Ratings, and Jeff Gates will frank his speed on this.
Thank you, Commissioners. I just want to give you a quick update on our bond rating and our latest issuance. As you're familiar with, in April, a team from the county went to New York to meet with the rating agencies in anticipation of a revenue bond, and also with our GO bonds coming in June. So that was a very successful trip. We haven't got our GO ratings back yet, but our water ratings, S&amp;P and Moody's affirmed our AA+ rating on our water utility, and Fitch affirmed its AA rating with a stable outlook. The reason why, and we had a lot of conversation with Fitch about why we didn't get that upgrade, largely deals with having the Yadkin Project come on, and such a large project coming on, their concern about stressing the finances of the system. But a AA with a strong, or a AA with a positive outlook or a stable outlook is very positive. So that's a good indication. With those ratings, we entered the market on Thursday. We had a very good day. I remember Commissioner Rape telling me, "Go out and get some of those bond premiums" that he likes so much. So we went out and sold about $68.4 million of bonds in the market. We haven't closed yet, but the deal's pretty much done. We received $10.04 million in bond premium, which is a little bit more than anticipated, about a million and a half more than what we thought. And I'll explain what we did with those premiums in just a moment. And then the county is paying an all-in interest rate of about 2.82% on a 25-year bond. So that's a very positive outcome. For utility and revenue bonds, unlike GO bonds, that bond premium, you use that to reduce the size of your bond issue, because you're looking for project amounts, a project fund, not a legal authorization of funding like you do with a GO bond. So what that means is that we were able to get $78 million of bond project funding, so $78 million worth of actual cash, for borrowing $68 million. So that's really good for the ratepayers. In addition, because we were at 2.82%, and we had originally modeled the debt at right around 3.5% to 3.6%, we saved an additional $11.6 million in interest over that 25-year period. So for the ratepayer, the impact is a little bit more than, or just under, $22 million of savings and/or project money that doesn't have to be paid back. So we had a very good day in the market. With that, remember, we have our GO sale coming up in July. We'll be doing our 2/3 bonds. You'll have a flurry of action, I think, on your next agenda related to all the bond orders. And then we'll have our second round of enterprise funds debt, probably in the spring, and that'll be about $35 million. So once we do that, we'll know what the rate impact of the 2019, or the 2019-2020 sales were. And I'm thinking the market will be good at that time. We were talking with the FAA today about it. So we'll keep you posted. And with that, I'll take any questions you have, or any comments.
Any questions from the Board?
Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next item will receive the county manager's proposed FY 2020 operating and capital budget.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the Commission. I'm pleased to provide to you my fiscal year 2020 recommended budget. This is the first budget as county manager that I've overseen, and I'm extremely proud of this recommendation. This recommendation is based on three core values the budget's built around, the first being maintaining fiscal discipline, the second, investing in our core services, and third, implementing a strategic framework for internal business processes. First, I'll address the maintaining fiscal discipline aspect. This budget recommends maintaining our total countywide tax rate at $73.09, not including the fire tax districts, balancing revenues and expenditures in the general county fund As you can see in the transmittal letter, there are two charts. Let me highlight a few things in those charts for you. There are, in terms of countywide tax rates, the school tax rate has been listed at $44.5 in FY 18-19 and is proposed at $44.5 in 2020. No change from last year. The general county tax rate is actually decreasing, currently at $21.84, proposed is $21.63, a difference of .21. Voter-approved debt rate is actually increasing with some voter-approved debt from $3.09 to $3.30, an increase of the offsetting 2.1. Emergency medical service tax rate in FY 19, it was $2.63. It proposed as $2.33, a reduction of .3. The countywide fire tax rate in FY 19 was $1.03, and proposed in 2020 is $1.33, an increase of .3. Budget by fund, school funds. The school fund is proposed to increase by $6,267,525, or 5.2%. The general county fund is proposed to decrease by $5,981,376, a decrease of 3.4% to the general county fund. Of course, voter-approved debt fund will be increasing by a little over $1 million at 13.4%. Emergency medical fund will be decreasing by the 3.2%. That's $239,533. The countywide fire fund will be increasing by $1,412,223. Fund balance usage. The FY 2020 proposed budget includes strategic use of unaside fund balance. The Government Finance Officers Association, the GFPA, best practices recommend fund balances be used and restricted to one-time, non-recurring expenses to avoid creating long-term liabilities with short-term funding sources. Applying this principle, I recommend the limited use of fund balance for three specific purposes. One is to offset the economic development grant payments, $1,69,500. Two, the purchase of one-half of the Sheriff's Office vehicle replacement request at $750,000. And three, a one-time apparatus and equipment purchases for the volunteer fire departments at $76,000, excuse me, $769,199. This deliberate use of fund balance allows the county to fully support our vital public safety network and provide the needed resources for the public safety of Union County residents and our important first responders. The FY 2019 adopted budget included a fund balance appropriation of $8,555,478 as compared to the FY 2020 recommendation of $2,576,431. The reduction of fund balance usage decreases the county's dependency on fund balance by 69.9%. The long-term goal is to continue this practice of limiting fund balance usage to important strategic initiatives. Fire funding. In line with our value of maintaining fiscal discipline, the Board of County Commissioners has been in the process of assessing the funding strategy for fire services over many years. After the STAND Tax Consultants Report was received this past year, several sessions were held with municipalities and volunteer fire departments. The Board took action to direct staff to work toward the implementation of the 80-20 funding model for FY 2021 budget year. In order to be best prepared for this transition, it's my recommendation that we include funding for several one-time expenses for fee-funded and tax-funded volunteer fire departments. The items that are included are critical to operations of our firefighters and are considered must-fund items. It proposes that funding be made available for this purpose through a two-step strategy. First, appropriate existing county general fund balance to the fire service budgetary fund in the amount of $769,199, and a tax rate swap from the EMS tax rate to the fire service budgetary fund of .30 cent, or $811,000, excuse me, let me try that one more time, There will be no negative impact to EMS. Their needs will be met by a combination of increasing revenues in their collections and the strategic use of their accumulated fund balance. Staff has been working with the fire chiefs in an effort to be true partners, working in good faith. The product of that work is a budget recommendation that I can support, given the needs of the community. I believe my recommendation provides funding to stabilize the provision of volunteer fire services while we transition to a stable funding model. Investing in core services. A primary component of the recommended budget is to sustain our current operations. Investment in our core services is fundamental to establishing a sustainable approach to providing services. Some of these key areas that you will see investments in are human services. There are three major, or three notable investments in this area, one being one additional Veteran Services Officer that's included in this recommendation, an important investment that provides valuable services to our veterans in the community. And I would like to note that collectively, the human services agencies, when ranking their needs and their need for funding, ranked the Veteran Service Officer as number one amongst all the needs in human services. We are continuing to transition contract positions to county positions in a commitment to be fair and transparent in how our services are provided. There are 20 positions included in the recommended budget for conversion from contract employment to county employment. Additionally, there's support for the Union County Public Schools Behavioral Health Collaborative. This proposal carries forward unspent current year program budget into fiscal year 2020 to fund five behavioral health therapists for the full year, one behavioral health supervisor, and five school social workers for a half a year. This amendment will happen at the end of the FY 2019 fiscal year. The next area is development services. Three items of note here. Two additional staff are being recommended for environmental health, one in the Children's Environmental Health Program and one in the Food and Lodging and Institutions Program. These areas have seen tremendous growth over the past 10 years. 24% increase in restaurant facilities, 30% increase in food stands, 69% increase in residential care facilities, and 47% increase in licensed childcare facilities. Tremendous growth in those areas. Two additional staff for building code enforcement are being recommended, one electrical inspector, one building inspector. These positions will allow us to get closer to the 24 turnaround timeframe for inspections. We currently have a two-day average wait. A planner position is included to provide additional support as we see more requests coming for rezonings. And you're aware of the activity that we've received, we've seen recently in rezonings. The third area is financial and tax administrative services. Two additional staff are being recommended to allow better alignment in our finance and budget functions, one budget analyst and one accountant position. Two additional positions to provide needed support as we move into work for our January 2021 revaluation. The fourth area, human resources. A human resource generalist position is being recommended to provide support for our workforce in addition to funding to allow for the follow-up training anticipated after our January 2020 employee climate survey. The fifth area, public safety. Emergency Management Coordinator is being recommended to provide needed support for the Emergency Management Director. Two additional Student Resource Officers, or SROs, are being recommended for elementary schools, along with a lieutenant to provide oversight for the Special Emergency Response Team and manage the sheriff's municipal contracts. Along with one part-time deputy to manage the evidence room. The next area, general services. Three additional positions in solid waste to provide for the needs in that area, and additionally, recommendations in facilities management, adding HVAC technician to general services technicians to provide the needed support for the square footage that they are responsible for. Public works. In the enterprise fund, we are recommending 14 and 1/2 positions be provided to public works operations. Six of these positions are tied directly to the acquisition of the Marshall Water Sewer System. Additionally recommended is one CIP engineer, one GIS technician, one systems analyst to enhance long-range strategic planning and building efforts, one process control and automations manager to increase systems efficiency. And if you're familiar with the SCADA system, that monitors our water flow within the county, the tanks, and the pump stations throughout the system. This position would manage and work with that program. One industrial pretreatment manager, one water treatment superintendent, one part-time meter technician, one utility technician to increase the quality within the system, one customer service specialist to better increase the service levels to residents. The next area, strategic framework. One of the things that I did as manager early on was to identify and put into place a strong management team. The primary driver for this team is to provide more direct oversight and focus onto our business units. The deputy county manager and assistant county managers are engaged in providing strategic directions to our departments, and we are working to put into place processes that clearly align the organization in a more effective and efficient manner. This budget recommendation includes items that are designed to be more strategic in nature and continue funding in the areas that strengthen our organization. The first area is capital planning. The Board received two presentations regarding capital planning and our approach to being more strategic with our facility renewal strategy. This plan was developed with the following outcomes in mind: reduce the deferred maintenance backlog, reduce or eliminate the rate of growth of deferred maintenance, improve the facility condition index, support projects required for program improvements, support growth space needs projects, and identify a consistent and sustainable level of investment in facility renewal. The second item is funding level. The second item is a funding level that's included in the manager's recommended budget. The operating capital, $550,000 in facilities replacement and renewal at $1,200,000. The idea with these two, operating capital and facilities replacement and renewal items in the capital budget, is to level fund them over time. Staff has done a very good job at identifying those projects into the future and trying to balance those over the next few years so that we have this level funding mechanism, and we don't see large spikes in times where we're not funding appropriately. Next is our major capital investment. I'm recommending three projects in the major capital investment area. First is the Board of Elections renovation and expansion, $4,500,000. Second is replacement of the locks in the security system associated with those at the Sheriff's Office jail in the amount of $850,000. And thirdly, is the Union County Recreation Complex at Jacy Helms Park in the amount of $2 million. Staff has been working to develop a process for identifying major capital investments, and we'll bring that to the Board this fall. The next item, investing in our employees. The county has maintained a commitment to a pay-for-performance system for the last six years. My recommended budget continues this commitment. The pool is approximately 3% of total payroll. That's $1.9 million from the general fund, $2.3 million across all funds. Additionally, the recommendation includes a 5% increase, which amounts to $802,551 in our contribution to the health insurance fund with no charges, no additional charges to, or changes to, the employee compensation. Education funding, a very important component of the budget. Education funding is an important part of our community. This investment in education is critical for our community to maintain and see progress. And because I am, and because of this, I'm happy to say that I'm including the requested funding for both South Piedmont Community College and Union County Public Schools. South Piedmont Community College is being funded at $5,854,307. You can see the breakdown in your budget books. That includes direct funding and funding for debt service. Union County Public Schools' funding is recommended at their requested level of $123,896,201. That's 102,942,93 in operational funding, and $20,193,945 in capital funding. And I just flipped to my page, and if you'll allow me one second, here we go. I've got myself now. The recommendation for Union County Public Schools' budget focuses on the following priorities and program enhancements. Social and emotional school-based support positions. The budget includes nine high school counselors, a lead middle school counselor and school-based support, career and college planning counselor liaison, one position, ROTC expansion and support at Cuthbertson and Parkwood. Actually, it's a partnership between Cuthbertson and Parkwood High School with additional supplies and equipment. Salary increase for teachers and certified staff at 5% and non-certified staff at 3%. Employer benefit increases, retirement increase funded at 4%, health premium increase budgeted at 4%. Compensation study is funded. They had a compensation study. The market increase for teacher assistance is included in the recommendation. Facilities operating would include supplies, state maintenance licensing incentives. Capital facilities, CIP projects, transportation vehicles, bus cameras, technology services, laptop lease payments, year-one-of-five projection for the refresh on the laptops and co-curricular support, band uniforms and equipment. This is an increase in the county appropriation for these items in the amount of $2,668,325. The recommendation, the recommended Union County Public Schools' capital budget totals $20,193,945 and includes the following. Facilities would be ADA, building systems renovations, furniture and equipment, painting, roofing, safety and security at a cost of $16,228,874. In the area of transportation vehicles and bus cameras at a cost of $285,879. Technology would be the laptop lease payment. Those teachers admins in grades six through 12, and year-one-of-five on the refresh for classroom projectors totaling a cost of $3,629,192. The co-curricular support, which is the band uniforms and equipment, at $50,000. These are an increase of $2,232,689 over the current fiscal year. The total recommendation for county funding of these items is $4,914 over the current fiscal year. In the item of outside agency and community partner funding, the county has provided funding to several outside agencies, community and community partners over several years, and that information is found in more detail in your budget book. My recommendation includes minor changes to this funding for the 2020 fiscal year. However, we received several inquiries regarding the ability for new agencies to apply or participate in this funding mechanism, and over the next several months, I will work with staff to develop a process for additional or new agencies to apply for funding from the county in fiscal In closing, I will tell you that I am proud of the work that staff has done compiling this information and providing it in the operating capital books that you have been presented. It allows us to maintain our current tax rate. The important items that, there are important items that I was not able to recommend for funding. As everyone is aware, the needs often outpace the resources. Staff was very diligent in working through what those needs are, prioritizing. I pointed out one of those prioritization processes in that the Human Services staff worked collectively together to identify their priorities and rank, for instance, the Veteran's Services Officer as the number-one priority. And I thank them for that work. They really worked as a team and unselfishly considered everyone's requests and needs and pulling together their budgets. There are many difficult decisions to make throughout the budget preparation project, however, I want to commend our entire staff for taking on the challenge to make the reductions to their budgets while maintaining effective services. I want to thank the management team, our department directors, Mr. Blake Hart, who you'll hear from in just one minute, and his staff, and our community partners for their role in the process. I only expect this process to get better. We've identified several things that we would like to do better in the future and how we would like to actually begin the budgeting process earlier. As I've told several staff, and they've heard me say this several times, and they'll hear me say it several more times, many of the items that we are asked to consider funding for are very large, complex items, and they're virtually impossible to take these items up in a very short condensed timeframe and then deliver good, sound, logical decisions. Many of these processes and these programs require, will require us to look at them on an ongoing basis. I've challenged a management team in a number of these areas, and what I would like to see going forward is, particularly with some of the larger funding issues that we have, is let's develop not just a 12-month look at what we are going to incur in expenses or costs, let's look at those costs over an extended period of time, whether that's two, three, four years, understanding what will be required next year and the next year and the next year, so that when we bring our recommendations, we can look to see what's required today and what will be required in the future to make these programs work and to be most efficient with the dollars that we're entrusted with. With that, I look forward to our continued discussion on the recommended budget prior to the scheduled adoption in June. Are there any questions? That was a lot of information, a tremendous amount of information, but for the record, it needed to be read in. But I will tell you, it's been a pleasure working with staff, bringing this recommendation to you.
Mark, one question I did have.
Sure.
The growth in FTE. I think I understood in the past, and perhaps you even said tonight, that is moving some of our contract employees onto the full-time county staff. Is that accurate?
That's accurate. It's been a phased approach. This is, and Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, I think this is the third year of three years. We've moved a portion, and a portion, and a portion. Contracted staff typically, temporary employment contract staff is meant to be just that, temporary. A number of our social service functions and a number of our public health functions have utilized contract employees over time. And this practice goes back into the late 1990s. And a lot of these employees have been with county and have worked alongside other county employees for quite some time and not shared in the employment benefits that our employees share in. When you look at the cost of contract employment versus the actual cost to have these employees join the county workforce and pay the benefit load associated with that, that cost is actually less. You're not paying that profit margin going to the contract services.
And of the 64 full-time and the 14.7 part-time, what number is that of contract to perm? In other words?
I understand.
Are you picking up what I'm laying down here?
Yep.
All right.
Bear with me one second. One second.
Michelle, is that the employees that we had to do for reporting reasons, had to be employees, could not be part-time in the Health Department?
Not the Health Department. You're thinking of Social Services, those that we had to transition. The majority of these transitions are in the Health Department, where there had been a longstanding practice of maintaining employees as part of a contract employment. And as Mr. Watson mentioned, the overhead is extensive. It's about 30% for that contract. So this, we believe, long-term really makes the most sense. Some of these employees have been with us between five and 10 years.
Weren't there some contract liabilities or something that the state made us regulate?
On the DSS side, you cannot have contract employees work in our NCFAST system. They're not able to do the same work that a non-contract employee can do. So that this, we continue to kind of clean up those contract employees, too. We have a few that are in this, and I think there are about 20 contract employees.
There are 20.
Commissioner Agnes' question.
Right, 20?
20, yes.
So we're adding an FTE of 20 outside of that, moving from contract to perm. Is that correct?
The 20 is included in the total number of FTEs that we're recommending, if I'm following you on your question.
All right. So I'm looking at your Strategic Framework slide, and it says includes FY 2020 proposed 64 full-time and 14.7 part-time. That's in addition from 2019, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, in other words, 59 are contract to perm, or 58, and 20 are new employees to the organization?
The 20 are the contract.
20 are the contract conversions.
Yeah, 20 are the contract conversion.
So how many new employees are we hiring, total?
I think you're looking at Blake's slides. I think if you'll, Blake is going to go through all these slides. I think if you'll give him a minute to do that, I believe he'll be able to answer that question for you.
All right. I'll look forward to that.
Yep. Any other questions?
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Blake?
Thank you, Chairman Helms and Commissioners, for allowing me to be here with you today. It's my pleasure to be here and share the details of the FY 2020 Union County budget. As County Manager Watson discussed, this county budget was built on three core values. They are maintaining fiscal discipline, investing in our core services, implementing a strategic framework for internal business processes. As we know, a budget is a plan, a forward-thinking financial plan made up of values, choices and consequences, and embodies a vision for the community. That is definitely what this budget includes. First, we're going to talk about maintaining fiscal discipline. We're going to go into a little bit of detail about the property tax base. When we met back in November, I believe at our first budget workshop, we talked about the early projections of what the tax base would be, and we continue with those projections. You can see the real property value is estimated to increase at 3% over FY 19. We're expecting personal property to increase 5.9 or 6%. Vehicle, 7.1%, and state certifications by 2%. That culminates into an overall growth rate to the tax base of 3.6%. That also increases the value of a penny from 2612456 in FY 19 to 2706032 in FY 20. And that calculation is based off a collection rate of 99.25%, which is remarkable, that we have such a high collection rate here in Union County. We're very, very, we benefit greatly from that opportunity. What we see here is a steady growth in the local tax base, and this is part of the formula that will allow the county to continue with the existing tax rate of 73.09 in FY 20. Now, we mentioned the county-wide tax rate of 73.09 will maintain, will remain flat. We're going to look at individual tax rates we have. We know we have a bifurcated tax rate here in Union County, and I have it listed here in order of greatest to smallest. So we have the schools' tax rate, which is being recommended to remain flat at 44.5. The general county tax rate is recommended to decrease by .21. You'll see the line just below that, which is voter-approved debt rate, will be increasing by .21. And we know that as per Board policy, the, any debt approved by voters will be paid, will respond with a proportional tax rate increase. And that's what's causing this change here, is the projects that were approved by the residents voting a few months back, with the emergency services op center and the Sheriff's Administration Building, the cost of debt on that borrowing is going to be .21 of the tax rate. So that's the shift there between the general tax rate and the voter-approved debt rate. County Manager Watson talked earlier about the tax rate swap or reallocation of tax rate between EMS and the county-wide fire tax rate. This is available, this is made possible, because EMS has been very diligent in operating their business and serving the community, and they've been able to build a bit of a fund balance on their side of the books, and they've been able to accommodate their needs for vehicle replacement with their existing resources. So that was a request initially made to the county in the amount of about $740,000, and it was agreed upon that they would be able to meet that need within their own resources. And in doing that, and with other revenues that we receive on their behalf and pass through to them that were increasing outside of the county-wide tax rate, made it possible to transfer that .3 of a penny to the county-wide fire tax to meet some needs among the fire departments in the community. The county-wide, so the EMS tax rate will decrease by .3 pennies. EMS will use their fund balance for vehicle replacement, and the county-wide fire tax will increase by the same .3 pennies to fund strategic one-time purchases for county volunteer fire departments. And the value of .3 of a penny is $811,810. Now, we're going to talk a little bit about the other side of that, from the revenues to the expenses. So we're going to look at budget by fund. So the first one is the school fund. The recommended increase of the school fund is just over $4 million. That's increased from last year from 119 million to 123, which is County Manager Watson Minson meets, fully funds the school's requests. This number is a little bit more because it takes into account the entire fund, and there were some revenues that are outside the tax rate also that increased a little bit that affect this number, too. But the bottom line, the story is that the schools SBCC and the school system as well are being recommended to be fully funded this year at their request amount with a flat tax rate. The general county fund is decreasing. That's also takes into account the portion of revenue that was, that's pulled out of the, of the general county fund and reapplied or reallocated to the voter-approved debt fund because of the needs on the growing debt and the approved projects there. If you look at the next line, voter-approved debt funding, that's increased there, just over $1 million, about $1.1 million is also associated with the cost of, of debt service on those, those approved projects that went to the ballot here recently. The emergency medical service fund you'll see there is decreasing by $239,000. That's a function of a couple of things. One is the tax rate swap we talked about, taking the .3, uh, uh, portion of a penny and reapplying that to the, the fire district. Also, there's some revenues within the EMS services fund that have decreased that transfer, so they're not losing out on the whole $811,000. They have some increasing revenues there to offset that as well. So, and also some organic growth in the value of a penny in that fund also. So that's why, that's a smaller number than the $811,000. The county-wide fire fund is a, will be increasing by 1.4 million. They're the beneficiaries of the real, the reapplication of the .3% tax rate from EMS to fire, as well as general fund transfer of fund balance of, of 769,000 and some odd dollars to, to meet those, those needs of, of funding one-time strategic purchases of apparatus and equipment. The increase to county-wide fire fund is, as I said, made up of EMS tax rate swap and a general fund balance transfer to meet those needs. Now, we're gonna talk about the revenues. If you look at the, um, the general revenues within the, the county's general fund, you'll see the ad valorem taxes and fees increasing by about one and a half million dollars. That's 2.6%. If you remember back to the, our first slide, we talked about how we were, we were projecting an increase in the tax base of 3.6%, and that's still reflected here. But again, you see the portion of this tax rate has been reassigned to the voter-approved debt fund because of the board policy that any, any increase in debt fund on voter-approved debt would be, uh, would, would necessitate an increase in, in the tax rate. Also, you'll see some intergovernmental, some change in intergovernmental revenue, just over a million dollars. That is, uh, that's a result of decreasing, uh, state and federal revenue within social services and, and other departments, but it's also offset by a decrease in expense in that area also. So you'll see a decrease in revenue of a million, but on the expense side also, there's a, a corresponding and I believe a larger decrease in expense in that area. If you drop down to the interfund transfers, you'll see 1.164 million dollars. That's the transfer in the current year from the school fund that funded the, the collaborative, the, the social services, uh, school, um, school system collaborative. That's been very successful at this point. That, that will now be, uh, that revenue will now directly be allocated to the school fund. So there won't be that, that transfer from the school fund to the county's general fund. It'll remain in the schools' fund and meet needs there within the schools', within the schools' budget. The, the last line there you'll see is fund balance appropriated. The appropriated fund balance will decrease by 5.89 million dollars. That's almost $6 million decrease in fund balance. If you remember back to adopting the FY 19 budget, there was, uh, we adopted appropriating fund balance of eight and a half million dollars. That included a, a couple of components. One was six and a half million dollars for the benefit of the schools for bond overages. And that was, uh, a decision made to support the school system in that way. In FY 20, that, that need isn't, isn't present, or their, their needs are being met through a general allocation of, of funds for, for, um, schools. So what that means is the, the county going in FY 20 is, is much less reliant on the use of fund balance for ongoing expenses. And in fact, strategically, this, this budgeting of fund balance is tied directly to one-time expenses or one-time purchases of a strategic manner. In this case, um, in this case, they are for, uh, fire purchases, economic development, and the sheriff's office purchases of vehicles. And we'll talk about that here in just a little bit. The, this is a slide that Commissioner Aikness, Aikness referred to a little earlier. This is, this is, let's see. I'm sorry, this is fund balance. We're not, we're not there quite yet. This is a fund balance. We're gonna talk a little bit more detail about fund balance. If you go back to 2016, you'll see that there was an adopted amount of 2.9 million for fund balance in FY 17, 2.7 million. The orange line above represents the percent change in that allocated funding amount. In 18, the amount increased from 2.7 million to 4.46. Then in 19, up to 8.5. And then the yellow bar is the actual revised number for allocated fund balance in FY 19. And you'll see that, that significant increase there between the adopted and revised. And I'll remind you, back a few weeks ago, maybe a month or so ago, when the board made the very astute decision to, um, to go forward with the early debt retirement, um, opportunity that was made available, to use a one-time injection of, of county fund balance to offset and reduce the amount of debt service that would be required or needed in the FY 20 budget, FY 21, FY 22, and, and so forth. So that increase there in debt service was using those available funds in current year, and the, the board acted very quickly to do that, so that we could increase, we could decrease the debt service needed for FY 20 and so forth. So it's a, it's a, a structural decrease to the debt service that we have in the general fund. The, the current amount that we're budgeting, that the manager's recommending be budgeted for fund balance in FY 20, you can see is, is much less. It's 2.66 million dollars, and this is a deliberate attempt to be strategic in thinking to, to not rely on a one-time funding source for ongoing expenses, but to look at that as a funding opportunity for specific one-time purchases that can be highly impactful in the community and can be highly impactful for board priorities such as public safety and economic development.
How much do we have in our reserves right now? What will we have for the coming year? What's the plan?
I'm gonna ask Jeff, is Jeff here? He's been doing some modeling on fund balance, and he's probably in a better position to...
Will be over 20%?
Based on our current projection to year-end for 2019, plus the budgeted usage for 2020, at the end of 2020, it's gonna be about 4 million over the 20% number, give or take. Keep in mind, that's a projection, so we still have the remainder of this year, two months, 'cause that was the end of April, and then all of next year. So, but that's based on our current projections. That's where we think we'll end up.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you. The, the impact of the early debt redemption opportunity was that the, it reduced the required debt service in FY 20 by over $9 million. And so that has been a, 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 a great opportunity to be able to balance the budget and fund priorities here in, in FY 2020. Without that decision made by the board to be forward-thinking and use available cash now to offset and decrease future fund balance, this would be a much different discussion we'd be having about choices and consequences, and what more could we reduce, and what more could we cut to, to balance the budget. But that decision created capacity within the budget for the, the county manager to recommend strategic funding for needed, needed areas such as capital requests, one-time funding for public safety items such as the sheriff's office and, and fire, and continue with the program to fund economic development revenues in that way also. And we'll, we'll go into a little more detail on that in, in future slides. The county manager talked about fire funding. The recommendation for fire funding is that the county-wide fire tax increase from 1.03 to 1.33. And again, that's a result of a reallocation or a tax rate swap from EMS to the county-wide tax rate. And again, just to reiterate, EMS will be fully funded on their, their requests for FY 20. They, they've had other revenues, and they've had fund balance on their side accumulating over time that they're, uh, they're happy to use to purchase some of their, their vehicle replacement needs. And so that created a capacity to redirect that funding mechanism towards fire in this year to meet some of those immediate needs. There are some recommendation for specific tax rate, tax rate increases also to meet the needs of individual fire tax districts. And on the next slide, we'll see a little bit more, more of that. Here, this slide is, gives a little bit of information regarding the, the specific one-time recommended purchases of apparatus and equipment that have been requested by the fire districts and are being recommended by our county manager for funding. If you look at the, the first column, you'll see the, the, the fire districts. The next column shows the increase, the, the county-wide tax rate from 1.03 to 1.33. In the next column, you'll see the FY 19 individual tax rate for the fire tax districts. In the, uh, in the next column, you'll see what the recommended, the requests that are recommended increase to that individual tax rate is, and what the change is over, over a year-over-year. So if you'll see HEMBE, you'll see there's a, an increase of 1.13 pennies to meet their stated needs. Stallings is 1.29, and Waxaw 1.05, and Wesley Chapel 1.08. And I, I do wanna say also that in, in going through and putting this presentation together, I've noticed a few areas where I need to go through and, and refine a few numbers. So between now and a public hearing, I'm gonna go through and double-check these numbers and make sure everything is accurate as possible. There may be a few, a few minor tweaks that need to happen between now and then. Going, I won't read through the entire list of what the, the requested one-time purchases are, just kind of spot-check. But as you go through those, you'll see that these are equipment, apparatus, materials needed in the community, number one, to keep the firefighters safe in what they're doing. An ill-equipped firefighter is not much, not much use going into a, a burning home to save one of your loved ones if they're at risk also. So the, the first priority is to meet the needs of the firefighters, make sure they have, they have the safety equipment to keep themselves safe and protected as they go through to sacrifice to benefit the rest of us. Also, to, to replenish, um, equipment and air packs that have reached the end of their life, and to, to provide for lifesaving, lifesaving equipment and, and other items to help them do their jobs in a more efficient manner, to be, to respond quicker and be more effective when they arrive unseen. Again, this is, uh, this can be funded. The recommendation is this, this will be funded through a, a general fund allocation of fund balance in the amount of 769,199, and then with the amount from the EMS tax rate swap of the .3 of the tax rate of 811,810. That's, that's the, that's the, the vision, the plan behind this recommendation. Any thoughts or questions before I go forward?
Stallings has that one-time purchase, or no one-time purchase. What, what is that?
So that, that's a, a good question. Let me, let me clarify this. This, these are the one-time purchases? There's also, uh, these were pulled out from the general request of each fire department that, that met the criteria of, of truly a one-time expense. So there's, there are other expenses, uh, budget enhancement requests of fire districts that didn't meet the threshold for one-time, and they're also being met through the county subsidy or through their fire fee or their local, uh, local tax or other revenues that they have as well.
So like, if we raise that tax a penny or 1.29, that will stay on forever, or it comes off next year, or?
It's, uh, I believe it's an annual approval based on the, the board, based on, based on the needs. It can change on an annual basis, is that...
And keep in mind, Commissioner Rushing, that we'll be going into the 80/20 modeling this fall to determine tax rates ba, based on the, the new allocation. So I wouldn't say that the 1.29 is a guarantee for next year going forward, but it's what's required for their operations today, until we get to the new 80/20 model.
I guess, give me an example of, um, what, what is that, that makes it go up a penny or 30 cents almost? Is it a fire truck, or, or is it air packs? What, what kind of, um...
What changed so drastically in their tax, in their, in their spending that, that we need to raise their tax at 1.29?
I believe in Stallings' case, most of it was personnel costs. They wanna increase the hourly rate for some of their part-time costs.
So, so that, that's not a one-time purchase? I guess, so it says no one, is that like a double negative or something?
Well, it's just interesting that you see that, like HEMBE, for example, you see a 1.13, but you see a $132,000 to replace air packs and a $60,000 air compressor. In Waxaw, you see a dollar, or 1.05, and you got a 15,000 PPE, a 30,000 truck replacement, $100,000 for land. In Wesley Chapel, you see 1.08, and you see 34,000 in operating and 157,000 in small equipment. But in Stallings, you see 1.29, and there's nothing, no one-time purchase. So what, what's the justification, I guess, is, I guess what Mr. Rushing and I are both getting at?
Yeah, that's, those are great points. And I, I went to the, the manager-recommended document here in the fire, uh, fire department section, and listed under Stallings, the first thing listed there, Patrick was correct, that they requested $292,000 to increase the hourly pay rate by a dollar per firefighter to achieve parity among all county fire departments. They also have requested an increase in vehicle maintenance of $14,500 to purchase fire equipment, fire truck equipment of $65,000, and they requested about $8,000 for, to replace some furniture in their dayroom for their firefighters.
Blake, I think I can answer the, I think I can answer the question.
Give it a shot.
So they actually, they don't relate to each other at all. So that's the answer.
All right.
The one-time purchase column matches to the 769,199 that we're using for one-time purchases out of the one, what was 1.03? I can't remember the recommendation.
1.3.
1.3 for FY 20. The, any tax rate change that you see in those four districts would be for their operation, ongoing operational costs.
All right.
So we're showing it to you in one slide, but the one-time purchases match up to the 769,199 in that general county tax rate.
So, so I guess then, to Commissioner Rushing's point, if, if these are truly operational costs, then we should not anticipate that that tax rate's gonna go away unless that fire department's gonna shrink dramatically.
I believe that is accurate, but I would also, I would echo what the manager said, that going into the 80/20 rate, we're gonna be relooking at everybody's rate structure on that model, so that everybody's rate will change in some form or fashion. That should be expected going into FY 21.
All right, fair enough.
Well, just a quick glance at it, looks about $600,000, maybe, I don't know on Stallings what it is. Could that come from somewhere else and keep the rate the same?
Commissioner Rushing, what I would tell you is that we, we worked really hard with all of the fire chiefs in, in every district, but particularly in the fire districts and the tax districts, to, to put into, to play the things that we thought were necessary for their operations. And other than the one-time funding that, that we found or, or kind of reallocated actually to accommodate those, we don't have another mechanism in the manager's recommendation to fund those, those ongoing expenses.
Do we have any in the commissioners? I mean, again, if it's less than, if it's less than a million dollars, and since we're going to a new rate anyways, to prevent a rate increase, you know, now, do we have some contingency money that we could use in that? Just to keep it, 'cause we're going, if we're going to look at the different models this year?
Right.
Just to keep it the same for now, or?
I would, I would suggest that you let us go back and put together for you the entire list, for each of these four tax districts, and show you what is included in those in detail in that total number. I can't do that right now off the top of my head. We're planning for a budget workshop around budget issues on June 10th, so we could provide that to you. We can do that probably this week, but have that available for discussion at the workshop, if that would be okay.
Can I address that? In the budget books...
I would, I would suggest that you let us go back and put together for you the entire list for each of these four tax districts and show you what is included in those in detail in that total number. I can't do that right now off the top of my head. We're planning for a budget workshop around budget issues on June 10th so we could provide that to you. We can do that probably this week, but have that available for discussion at the workshop if that would be okay.
Can I address that? In the budget books that we got Friday, it, it basically for each department shows what the tax increase goes to. The, and as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, these one-time purchases were funded out of the 1.3.
Correct.
Right. So we're funding, we are funding on some of these tax districts out of county general funds. And this was what I had talked to each one of y'all individually about possibly having a town hall with these four taxing districts to ask the town boards to sign off on this too.
I never heard any more about that.
Well, we hadn't, we hadn't got to it. That's right. And I might point out, two of these four, HIMBE Bridge and Stallings, they can set their own tax. They have the power to set it. So statute, they don't have.
Well, they've got approval up to, like HIMBE Bridge has got an approval up to 15 cents that they can go.
The board has a separate type of tax for HIMBE and Stallings. The tax is always loaded by the board.
Well, I thought I was told in the past, those two departments could, could set their own tax rate. Well, I stand, I learn something every day, man. And I think.
Back to Michelle, I appreciate you providing that right there.
Absolutely.
And I think another thing that I heard from talking to the FIRE chiefs, there'd been a lot of no, no, no in the past in some of this. It's like Johnny Blythe said, who's in the audience, he says, "We don't cover what we think we need, I mean, what we need, we cover what might happen." And when he put it in that perspective, that's almost like these school resource officers or social.
Please don't be mistaken. I'm, I'm not saying that we don't need to get what's on here. I'm just wondering if we need to change the rating structure before a massive change in the way we do it, if we can, if we have monies available. Again, I'm just adding in my brain here, maybe 600,000, I'm just looking at it real quick, but I don't know Stallings, I don't know what's there. So that's the only one I'm not sure of. But if it's something that we can do even out of the, the general fund in addition to, just to keep the rates the same, because they, you know, those, those fire departments I know in the past have not, they've relied solely on their tax rate and they don't get the, do they, do we still give them a piece of the 1.33?
So I mean, I would point out, for the past year in particular, Stallings did get a fairly significant, about $400,000 for, for one-time, for air packs that came out of the general county tax.
I got you.
I think that may be the only example that I can come up with in recent years.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to lay it around more.
Mr. Rushing, I've also, I have talked to the manager and deputy manager in two-on-ones. There's some departments that I think are getting, they're getting a lion's share of the 1.03, which will become 1.3. I won't call them out, so we might look at that too.
Could I ask a question on Commissioner Rushing's comment? I agree, I'd love to, I'd love to have it maintained level this year with the change in the 80/20 next year. Would, if, to do that, would it require the 769,000 plus the 811 or just the 769 to keep it flat?
It would take all of it plus some. That's the number, the plus sum is the number I don't know off the top of my head. You would have, what Commissioner Rushing is, is I think suggesting is that the tax changes for HIMBE, Stallings, Waxaw and Wesley Chapel would be assumed by some other revenue source. So we would need to go back and tell you what that amount is. The penny value for tax district is different for each of them, so I can't do that math just sitting here off the top of my head. And I want to be, I want us to be precise, and that would take a, a different revenue source than what we've proposed tonight.
Well, that's what we're asking you. Tell us.
We will do that. We will give you that.
Great. Sorry about that. Sorry. No, no problem. Ready to move on?
Go ahead.
All right. The next slide, I want to talk a little about the strategic framework. And this is, this is the slide that Commissioner Ignis, Ignis referred to earlier. The, the, this slide represents the total FTEs within the county from the time period of FY2008 through projected FY2020. And the line above that is the, the growth in the county population. So if you look at the, the decrease there from 2008 through about 2012 or 13, that's, that's the recession. We all, we all have very bad memories of, of that time period. But like every other county government in North Carolina and across the country most likely, the county shed, shed positions and shed FTEs. And if you look to the, the point when the FTE amounts in the county returned to the, the similar funding level of what it was in FY2008 before the recession, it took until 2016 to return to similar FTE amounts within the county. The, now if you look at the percentage change above that, the population growth rate between 2008 and FY20, the population grew by 33.8% during that time, that, that time period. And while the FTEs grew at 28%. So that's, there's not a huge variation between those two numbers. But what, what is interesting is the FY20 position count includes the positions that are being recommended within this recommended budget. So even at that, that timeframe with the, the additional 64 positions and 14.7 part-time positions, they're still behind the average growth rate for, for the population. That's just a point of, a point of interest based on how we weathered the recession, what the customer service levels were, what the, the expected customer service standards will be going forward and where we want to be as, as an organization to respond to those needs.
So we have 68 positions from the difference in those yellow blocks?
There's 68 position differences?
64 full-time positions.
Well, the 68, 12, 23 minus 11.55 comes up to 60. I'm taking, I'm assuming the, the other four positions are part-time, that 14, part-time positions spread out?
Yeah, so it's 64 full-time and 14.7 part-time.
Okay. And I'm just going by the yellow blocks with the numbers on them. So we've got 20 of those that are going to be full-time, they're, they're just basically a shift. So now we have 48 of those deputies, little mix of positions or what?
There's actually 20, 22 are in human services, 22 full-time positions are in human services. 42 are spread out amongst the rest of the organization, including those 14 some odd positions in public works. Majority of those are for the Marshville Water Sewer Acquisition.
And those are included in here too?
That's correct.
So there's, there are actually 17 positions, 17 and a half positions that are coming out of your enterprise fund. So out of public works enterprise and out of solid waste enterprise, those two add up to 17 and a half FTEs.
How many deputies? Do we know?
Yes, there is, there are two SROs, so those are two deputy, full-time deputy positions, a lieutenant and a part-time deputy position included for the sheriff.
Three and a half.
Three and a half.
Yep.
And the 17 out of public works, that's the word, Marshville?
It's actually 14.5. The 17 number is both enterprise funds. So 14 and a half is public works total. So you've got Marshville, that's six, plus that customer service representative also is, is sort of built into that. So it's really like six slash seven. The rest of those are other positions within public works.
Other?
Yes, sir. If you want me to go through them?
I would.
Absolutely.
Before you do that, is this all in my book that I can look at?
It is, but I'll be happy to.
Then no need. I think look at it.
It's in the, the transmittal letter.
Very good.
Those school, those folks are in here too? The new ones for the schools?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Because we're paying for them.
Correct. Correct. I would add, it is in the transmittal letter, but that's not a one-for-one headcount match because those were highlights. But let us, we will give you a, an exact headcount by, by department so that you have that. Because if you count what's in the transmittal, you're going to come up short and ask us where those are.
All right. Yeah, if you'll give me that breakdown, that'd be great.
Okay.
All right. Move forward. Okay. The next, we're going to talk a little about capital planning as part of our strategic framework. County Manager Watson did a great job to, to outline his, his vision for capital planning. I'm sure you remember, you'll remember a few weeks ago when Chris Boyd gave a great presentation about all the work he's done to assess the needs of county facilities and, and needs going forward, deferred maintenance and, and other types. But basically, this is, this is the, the best assessment of the ongoing annual need of, to, to keep facilities in, in working order, to meet the needs for HVAC systems, roofs, buildings, carpets, finishings, all those types of things, as well as larger construction projects. The funding plan provides for current and future facility needs, provides level funding for capital needs and ongoing maintenance savings. And this is a, a key point where the funding made available here in Pago and other, other funding sources for facilities is something that was made available because of the early debt redemption decision that was made to, to decrease, to use fund balance now to decrease the debt service payments in FY20 and going forward to create capacity to meet emerging needs like this. All right. The next one, investing in employees. Again, our county manager went through this as well, but this is the, the county's plan to continue commitment to employees as the organization's greatest asset, to attract and retain a highly motivated and talented workforce and continue to offer a generous benefit package to retain current employees and, and recruit high achieving employees that, that may be interested in coming to Union County working in this great organization. And this includes a 3% of payroll for pay for performance, a 5% increase in the health insurance fund, which was not pushed on to employees this year. And also there was a state mandated increase to the local government employee, employees' retirement fund that the county absorbed also as part of this budget process. Next, we're, we're going to return to education funding. The, the story here is that the, the manager is recommending full funding for SPCC at their full recommend, their full requested amount. As part of this request, the county will be funding one career coach to better link students with job training vocational opportunities. The, that's also a priority for the school system and doing that as well. The public schools will be funded at their full requested amount. Important to remember that this will be with a flat tax rate. It's a total increase of $4.9 million over FY19. And this is proposing the second year funding of the DSS, a school collaborative process. And important to note that the funding for the collabor, the second round of collaborative positions will be, is, it is recommended this will be funded through a carry forward of unspent current year budget from that specific purpose to be carried forward to fund those positions in FY20. And again, those were 15 positions, I believe, nine behavioral health therapists, one behavioral health, health supervisor and five senior social workers for a total of 15 positions at an estimated cost of $437,000.
Have, have we been able to recoup some of that? Or is that, have we talked about that before?
No, sir. We, we continue to look at, at options. Our, our best option that we've identified is actually through public health. And so Jackie Morgan and her staff have been researching that and thinking of ways where we can draw down dollars. And as you'll see, we're actually asking for more behavioral health therapists than we are social workers. That's really where our highest need is. So that is our biggest opportunity and our billing office is continuing to, to figure out how we can do that better one into the next school year to recruit some dollars if that's available to us.
All right.
We haven't let that go.
All right. This is one of the final slides. I wanted to be sure to highlight the, the great successes that are recommended in this, in this budget. If you remember back to November, our first budget workshop, we talked about budget assumptions going into the budget process. And one of those primary assumptions was that we were going to start in, in a deficit position of six and a half million dollars. And we did, and through the early, early debt redemption and through some, some revenue opportunities and through some efficiencies within the organization, the county manager was able to overcome that. Also find a, a total expense decrease to the general fund of almost $6 million or a total decrease of, of expense of 3.4% in one year. The, again, I want to note the strategic early debt redemption that decreased the operating budget in FY20 by over $9 million. That made it possible to reallocate that funding in, in other, other strategic areas. The decreased fund balance allocation from 8.5 million, which was the adopted rate in FY19, to just 2.67 million in FY20 to provide funding for strategic one-time purchases for FIRE departments and also to meet the, the capital needs and vehicle replacement needs of the sheriff's office and as well as economic development. Also fully funding SPCC at their requested amount, which is an increase of $152,000. Also fully funding the school system at their requested amount, which is an increase of almost $5 million. Investing employees with a 3% of payroll, pay for, pay for performance, fund significant one-time needs for apparatus and equipment for FIRE departments, fully fund the sheriff's request, dedicate a level, dedicate a level and reoccurring funding stream for operation, operating capital, $550,000 facility renewal and renovation of 1.2 million and major capital, 4.3 million in Pago. These are significant investments in public works also that fall under their, their planned rate increases. And the beauty of all of this is that, that this comes with no tax increase to the county tax rate. And, and to follow up, the, then a few more, a few key dates on our schedule. We have a budget public hearing on June 3rd, a budget workshop on June 10th and the potential budget adoption on June 17th. And for additional information, anyone that may be watching can certainly come to the county website to watch proceedings, to get information. We're going to have a, a PDF version of the recommended budget book that you've received posted on the county website first thing in the morning and certainly follow the county's social media websites. I want to make sure and acknowledge and appreciate publicly all those who have participated in this process, that this, the entire organization has participated in this process. I want, I want to recognize the tax successor's office for all the hard work they do in helping us get accurate penny values, accurate valuations to build a budget on, the first layer. The clerk's office for all their hard work in coordinating all of, everything that we've done. The budget and finance staff within departments, they, early in the process, they carry a lion's share of the burden and responsibility for doing that. And they were very generous with their time and efforts this year as we made some pretty strong requests to find efficiencies this year. They did a great job. The county manager and the county management team in their first year together doing a great job to lead us in, in the process of, of adopting a budget. And also the budget management and finance team, primarily our two analysts, Avery Cucro and Amanda Newton, who have worked tirelessly, many hours and much effort and their talent, time, talent and, and intelligence in this process. And with that, thank you. If there's any questions or comments, I'm happy to, to hear or respond to anything. And we have some takeaways to go work on before we come back to you here in a week or so.
Any questions?
I've got a comment. I, I would like to commend everybody, all that you just spoke of, and I won't repeat it. But I've spent my whole life dealing with deadlines, Blake, and lean And Lynn Friday, she said the budgets would be ready at 3 o'clock, and, you know, I came at 3:00 and they weren't quite ready. When you came up with them about 4:30, I could see a tired, yet very happy person to have those books in his hand. I know it, it was the whole financial department working with you. But as somebody, I think Mr. Yates said, he is the budget director, so he delivers the, you know, with, with everybody else helping you. But I admire your work ethic, and I spent most of the weekend trying to read it. This is my first budget, and it was, it was very, fairly easy to understand. And of course, I've had to ask a lot of questions, but it was a good job. And I just wish, you know, you the best in the future.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And next year, you'll have it at 3:00 promptly. You have to wait a year to get it though.
Dennis, what do you didn't tell him? He brought it to our houses, so we can at least, you know. I know you didn't like that boxer that was fussing at you when you came.
Your attack dog almost started to bring me off.
Thank you for bringing it out.
No problem. Thank you.
All right, next we have county managers.
I have no comments to add this evening.
Okay. Commissioner Agnes?
I have no comments.
Commissioner Rushing?
I, I would like to thank everyone. I went through a very educational experience last week, and I wanted to thank everyone for their support in, in the election. And, and I will say this, we really have to commend our Union County Elections Director. In February and last November, we were told that no one could touch your ballot and that we needed a new election. Then in February, during hearings, we, we heard this over and over again about no one can mail your ballot except for a relative. And lo and behold, in March, on March 28th, the State Board of Elections sent out a memo asking our local board and every other board throughout the ninth district to apply a sticker onto the envelope saying that anybody could mail your ballot, and you just needed to check the block that you had mailed it. And then after our Elections Director noticed a discrepancy, she contacted the State Board on March 29th. And finally, almost in May, we got a response that it was a mistake, that only if you had a disability could someone, which is the actual law. So I would like to commend her, her and her staff for keeping a keen eye on that, and would hope that the State General Assembly would make some strict rules to make sure that this doesn't happen to us in the future. And now that I don't have a dog in the fight, I would like to ask to make sure that we have all the polling locations open in September for that election for early voting. I know it's very difficult on a lot of our residents to vote just in one single location in Union County. And I think it's very important that we do make sure that all those are open for the election in September, on September 10th. Thank you.
Commissioner Simpson?
Just like to say that I certainly recognize and appreciate all the effort that went into the budget process and the information provided. Certainly makes our job easy. And also to congratulate Van Harrell and his staff on reappointment as tax administrator.
Commissioner, I also would like to congratulate Van and his staff on their reappointment. And I can tell you, this is about my sixth budget, and it has seemed the smoothest of any so far. And it's because of the hard work. And I believe you asked for a 2% reduction, and you, and the paperwork said 3.6. So they, we have to commend our individual departments for stepping up and finding ways to save our taxpayers' dollars. With that, I'll ask a sort of motion to adjourn. All in favor?